Call the meeting for September the 26th, 2017, public hearing to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Councilwoman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beer.
Here.
Councilwoman Lamore Marshall.
Here.
Councilwoman Mike Williams.
Here.
Public hearing number one, an ordinance for annexation into the Hammond City Limits, initial zoning to CN, and to be placed in the city council district number three, requested by Monroe Manor Limited Partnership for 11.427 acres, being lot 1A of the Rose Stacy Mini partition located at 42250 North Oaks Drive. In accordance with survey by Andrew Fowler, recommend approval by Planning Commission Tracy Schalace.
Good afternoon, council. This is an ordinance to annex a piece of property on North Oaks Drive. It's anticipated to be a medical facility, and we have the approvals from the registrar voters and the tax assessor's office to annex this portion of property.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Do we need to review anything else? The mayor, you want to talk about anything else on that ordinance? Okay. All right. Thanks, I appreciate it. All right, number two, please. I got my numbers up, I'm good to go now.
Okay. Number two. An ordinance to amend ordinance UDC number 145364, Appendix E, Historic District Appendix A, Residential Clarifications, recommend approval by zoning commission Leah Solomon.
Hi, everyone. I am here to rediscuss the Historic District Commissions wish to add an Appendix A into our design guidelines for residential clarifications and to make some sections a little less stringent for residential needs.
Is the result of the public hearing out?
Yes, we had two working sessions and a public meeting.
You have no questions? Any questions from the council?
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
I know when this initially came up, it was very divided. Do you feel that, is it, I know not everyone will be happy, but do you feel like it's...
I think we hit on some really key points, especially with landscaping, with decks, with retrofit. You know, people want to move their residential properties forward, and some of our guidelines were a little too stringent in that area. So, I think I've had good feedback since the public meeting, and I think we addressed some of the really key concerns.
Now, we have a meeting tomorrow as well, right? You guys have a meeting tomorrow?
Oh, yes, that's for the architectural structures survey.
Right, okay. Does that factor into this at all?
No.
This portion?
No.
Any questions? Any other questions from the council?
I'd just like to thank you for taking that on, coming to some consensus.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
Now that we got you full-time, at least a full-time position, we can do those things, huh?
Uh-huh, and I'm cleaning out the file cabinets, let me tell you.
All right. Okay. Any questions from the public? Okay, thank you. Number three, please.
Number three. A discussion of the 2% hotel motel occupancy tax to be levied by the Hammond Area Economic and Industrial Development District, Amy Hoyt.
Before you speak, Amy, I'd just like to say thank you for coming out and visiting with us.
Thank you.
And I know that we had mentioned that maybe the Heidi Board would probably want to speak as well. I know they're not on the agenda, but we are going to offer that time if they, if someone from an organization so desires.
Sure.
We just appreciate that, from the council perspective, that you're coming to visit with us, because we, this is the first time anyone's actually talked to the council as a body about tax, so we're happy to hear more from you, from your perspective on that.
And we appreciate, you know, the opportunity to be here. We felt like it was important to kind of present it from the hotel standpoint to the city of Hammond, and, you know, to the public that's here, so that you would kind of understand why we feel like that it will have a direct impact on us. You know, a lot of people don't realize that each hotel kind of has a director of sales of their own, and that person's responsibility, several times throughout the year...
I'm sorry, Amy, I probably interrupted, but I forgot the protocol. We need to get your, just state your name and your address for the record, please.
Sure. Amy Hoyt, 401 Weston Oak Drive, Hammond, Louisiana, 70403.
I apologize for that.
That's okay. And so that person's responsibility is to target, you know, businesses and companies, both that travel to the city of Hammond, directly to do business in the city of Hammond, and that may travel to other cities around us, say Walker, Denham Springs, Covington. So, each year, we pull a list of all these companies that may have 300 room nights that we can have the opportunity to pull to stay in the city of Hammond. So with that being said, the rate that we are able to offer them, if we lose that business because of two, in my case, it would affect us, it would add $2, a little over $2 per night. So if I'm trying to gain a piece of business that brings 300 room nights a year to the city of Hammond, when that person that sits in Chicago or anywhere else that's responsible for looking at these RFPs and determining which cities are allowed to stop in, which cities they're allowed to overnight in, and which cities they're not allowed to overnight in, if I say immediately I can save the company over $600 a year, Hammond comes off the list automatically. So, we don't stand a chance at that point. We, we're already slightly higher than the surrounding cities on tax. This would put us pretty much a lot higher, in some cases, over 2% higher than, like Livingston. Walker, current sales tax is at 14. Denham Springs is at 13.5. Mandeville is at 13.25. Covington, 12.75. And La Plaize, 12.5. So, we already, you know, battled that a little bit, but we're able to overcome it. But losing 300, one company, just, this is just one company, 300 room nights a year would greatly affect us. So we would have to make up, talking about $30,000 or more a year. So in turn, it would also cause us to have to look at things that we're able to offer to different sporting events, to Southeastern, sponsorships that we're able to do to Southeastern, you know, where we're able to offer so many comp rooms for them to bring in recruits. So, it would, it would have a domino effect. We're able to offer comp rooms for some sporting events, when they have costs that are associated with bringing in the tournament to Chapapula or Punchestula Sports Park or anywhere else. When they bring in these large tournaments, they're responsible for paying for the referee rooms. In many cases, you'll have a local hotel that'll step up and say, "We'll comp those rooms for you if you can bring the tournament into the city." We keep track of how many, how many companies or how many individuals, we refer to local restaurants. Just in two nights this week, and, and speaking from just the Hampton Inn here in Hammond, 81 rooms, so not a huge property, but just in two nights, we referred over 45 people to local restaurants here in town. So, the impacts are much more than, than what they seem. When you're talking about trying to pull in a group of business, 40 room nights for three, you know, for three nights, when you're adding $2 a night to every one of those rooms, it adds up quick. So those are the kind of groups, the larger numbers are the people that it's going to affect.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
How much, what percentage do you think your business would be in the group, the group type sales?
Group sales? We probably do about 20% group sales, and that's only group, not, I'm not talking about like the corporate business that we're talking about with the...
I'm talking about the corporate business as well. Like, how much, how much of your total sales would be?
Oh, goodness.
That's what, I really want to know that.
Corporate business, we, 65% is probably corporate business.
So, the individual, the individual, you know, stay from, a family coming in from another city in Spain is, is...
It's a, it's a small portion.
Smaller portion.
So those, those aren't the people that we're worried so much about. It's the, the bigger companies who are operating within a travel budget, you know, they have to stay within those travel budgets, and they have options where they stay. They don't have to stay in Hammond, because those people, lots of times will travel, they'll stop in Hammond on a Tuesday night, and they may travel to New Orleans on Wednesday, Baton Rouge on Thursday, Covington on Friday, and then they check out with us. So, they, they don't have to stay in Hammond.
Are sometimes those contracts more than one year at a time, or...
Very seldom do we do more than one year at a time.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, very, very seldom.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Well, we're gonna, I know that, this, do you have any comments to...
I'd like to speak.
Sure, sure. Come on in. Just before you start, just state your name or your address for the record, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Joe Meir. My address is 44065 High Oaks Trail, Hammond, Louisiana. I am currently president of the Hammond Area Economic Industrial Development District, known as Heidi. Heidi has two general missions, to attract business and to retain and expand jobs in existing businesses, businesses and industries in Hammond. Heidi is a collection of professional, professionals, officials, and other local community leaders, working to ensure that Hammond's best interests are served, while seeking expansion and growth for Hammond residents. The health and quality of life and sustainability of a city is grounded in its ability to retain and create jobs that pay a family wage in an environment where businesses can thrive. However, economic prosperity requires a strategic approach, where new businesses, business ventures emerge and thrive as well. As the state continues to cut budget, budget in all areas, including funding for economic development, they are expecting parishes and municipalities to stay on their own and generate economic development funds from within. Presently, Heidi is operating from a non-recurring revenue stream and the city budget. Heidi went through the proper protocols of reaching out to state, parish tourism, and city budgets to see if additional funds for economic development were available to find, to find that there were no funds, no funds available. Heidi is asking voters within the city of limits to know the facts. Consider approving a 2% tax that will apply to hotels, motels, and campgrounds within the city limits of Hammond. This occupancy tax will be devoted to Hammond economic development. We believe that this 2% on lodging will not have a negative impact on the area, as this will add an average of $1.58 to an average hotel room of $79 within the city limits of Hammond. While we understand our hotel and motel partners' concern on this issue, we believe that the amenities that Hammond has to offer are worth the additional 2% that mostly visitors will pay. One misunderstanding has been discussed, isn't there a hotel motel tax already being collected for Hammond economic development? The short answer is no. There is a 4% hotel motel tax that has been, that is being collected, and it's directed to Tangi Boa Parish Tourism Commission. Nowhere in the language of the bill does it indicate that any of the 4% tax be dedicated, directed to Hammond economic development. If passed on November the 18th, these funds will be devoted on, to economic development and targeting new economic markets, and demonstrating to site selectors how Hammond can meet their needs by having the funds to assist with potential infrastructure needs. One of these examples of Heidi having, having done this in the past would be the entrance road to Hyde Park Business Park. That business park now has two 100,000 square foot warehouses, multiple businesses along that roadway, and access to the very successful Chapapula Sports Complex. This sports complex welcomes 70,259 visitors a month. These visitors also have spent $2,885,266 per year in lodging. Overall, this economic engine generates $9.6 million annually to our area. This is an example of using economic development funds to generate jobs, and in turn, quality of life items for Hammond. The importance, the importance of adequate infrastructure and attracting economic development should not be overlooked. If passed, these funds could be used to leverage federal economic development grants to prepare and expand on economic development tools like the Hammond Rail Spur on Pride Drive that could assist in attracting a distribution and or manufacturing company with rail needs. These funds could be used for possible infrastructure improvements on the future traffic loop that will connect Pride Drive to University Boulevard, that we see as a major business corridor in the future. Hammond offers a considerable number of economic strengths and assets. In general, the responsibility for providing these types of infrastructure falls to local government and/or economic development groups. Sometimes there is a partnership between private and public sectors, for example, railroads and some utilities. The more efficiently Hammond can partnership between the public and private sector, can provide, the more, the more efficiently Hammond can provide or facilitate this expected infrastructure, the lower the cost will be for business development and/or expand in Hammond. These funds may also be used to track, training, work, fast-track training of workforce that could assist in existing businesses' expansion, or be a deciding factor for a new business in Hammond, which would create quality jobs for people in Hammond and Tangi Boa Parish. Identifying and implementing effective economic development strategies has become a widespread pursuit among communities in the US, and Heidi is seeking, Heidi is seeking approval of tax to continue its work in pursuing those economic development strategies. Remember, this tax will typically be paid by out-of-town visitors that will be staying at a hotel, motel, or campground within the city limits. These visitors consist of people visiting our festivals, working at construction sites, attending sporting events, graduations, continuing ed at SLU, courses at Southeastern Small Business Center, and many other reasons beyond tourism. Economic development is directly tied to a safer community, a thriving community, and the, the improvement of the quality of life in our community. The Hammond Economic Development Board is committed to providing a cooperative environment for economic growth and sustained opportunities for our citizens in Hammond and in turn, the entire parish. We are asking for the residents of, the city of Hammond to help us, help Hammond grow in a positive way, and provide quality jobs, opportunities to everyone in the area. By supporting this dedicated income stream, it will allow us to plan and be prepared for the future needs of attracting businesses and additional jobs to the area, but not at the expense of Hammond residents typically. Hammond Area Economic Knows, Grows, and Impacts Hammond. We are asking residents of Hammond to make a pivotal choice about its economic development future. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you saying that...
Use your mic, just in case.
First of all, this board, I'm loud enough, I don't think I really need it. But you're, you're telling me that this board is a Hammond organization?
It is the Hammond, it's, it's a political sub...
But you were also talking about the whole parish. Do we have an economic development organization for the parish?
There is tangible economic development that is for the parish, yes, ma'am.
So, what is the need for Hammond to have one of their own, if we have one for the parish?
Yes, ma'am. Many municipalities have their own, their own economic development departments, I mean...
And do you work side-by-side with the one in the parish?
We, we do, we do cooperate with the one in the parish on different projects, but just like any other place, if, we're, we're looking at Hammond first, and we are looking to bring business and development to Hammond first. If it doesn't fit in Hammond, of course, we're looking to bring it to Tangi Boa Parish. If it doesn't fit in Tangi Boa Parish, we're looking to bring it to a partnering parish nearby that jobs will still have an impact here. But we want to look at Hammond first, and we want people working for Hammond first.
Okay, and I heard you say that these funds were used for different things, so exactly, could you reiterate what you had said about what these funds are going to be used for?
Sure, they could be used for infrastructure. For example, a company that's coming into our area, and they need water, gas, or sewer brought to the property line to bring that company to the, to the area. Well, depending on the amount of jobs that they're bringing in to the area, if these funds are available, we could facilitate some of those funds matching either with the city, with the parish, with federal grants, to help bring that infrastructure to that place. If there's a company that's coming in and needs a certain skill set within their workers, and we've got the funds that we can facilitate, which we've done soft skills training with economic development in the past, we can facilitate a fast-track training program that can help bring those workers up to speed on that particular technique that that company needs to, to expand or bring that next tool or item that they're manufacturing.
So, our hotels is the only businesses that are being targeted by this tax?
On this tax, yes, ma'am. Hotels, motels, and campgrounds, we, we search...
For the parish or just for...
No, just within the city limits of Hammond.
So let me ask you a question on that. So, your goal, your desire, not to cut, were you, I'm sorry, just to piggyback on what you were saying, council, I'm sorry about that. But just a question, if you're, so the vision that you just mentioned is inclusive of the entire parish. Am I saying that right?
Centrally focused on Hammond first.
You did mention that it was inclusive of the entire parish.
Hammond is in the parish, yes, sir.
So, so then the funding that we were going to collect in the city of Hammond could potentially be used to fund projects outside the city of Hammond?
No, funds have to be used under our guidelines and bylaws of the Hammond, Heidi District has to be used for Hammond economic development.
Okay. I just want to make sure, I want to make sure that point was clear.
Hold up, hold up. But you did say that you were looking for a fit for Hammond first, but if not in Hammond, then the whole parish, so then you, so that's kind of double speak.
Okay. I can, I can be clear on that.
Okay. Because, see, you said Hammond first.
Yes, ma'am.
And then you said the guidelines had to be used for Hammond.
Not the funds. I'm talking about economic development. If a company comes to Hammond, and we are looking to bring them into Hammond, those funds can only be used to bring them into Hammond.
Oh, so what you're saying then, if it's not a good fit for Hammond, then like this young lady said about making a referral, then you're only making a referral, you're not using those funds, that, that we're collecting just from our hotels within the city of Hammond throughout the parish? Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying. We, the funds will be used in Hammond economic development, to do Hammond economic development.
I want, I wanted to say, first of all, thank you for coming to the council. This is the first time we've ever had anyone from the Heidi Board, I think, to address the council and talk about the tax, because I think since this has been going on, the council has been kind of left out of the conversation as it relates to the tax, so we do, you know, we do appreciate that. But I did want to ask you a question. I, I'm just trying to think, did the Heidi Board make a recommendation to the council for any funding for, I don't remember that happening, you know, you mentioned in your, in your comments that the Heidi Board seeked out the council for funding, or the city for funding. Mayor, you might want to answer that, I don't know, do we ever, do we ever address...
The Heidi Board seeked out the Tangi Tourism Fund.
Oh, okay. You said the city of Hammond, I thought, so you never actually went to the, asked this...
Actually helped them with funding.
Y'all are already, y'all are already participating in some funding.
Right. You know, I have a couple of questions. And I know that we have the TEDF in town, and I know that's, that's, you know, I looked at, I was doing some comparison before this meeting to look at what we do in Livingston Parish, which has a pretty, would you say they have a pretty successful economic development strategy at Livingston Parish? I think, I think they do, they, they've been doing pretty well over there, lots of funding, and they run through a consolidated process through a parish. I don't think they have a, an individual, you know, like a, like a Denham Springs Economic Development Team, I could be wrong, I don't think so. I think they're all working in kind of like one umbrella. So, we have the TEDF, and I know, I think that, just, just for the record, I think that sometimes in the past, the Heidi Board had a more of an impact when maybe there wasn't as much of an emphasis at the parish level for economic development. But now with the new parish president, at the, at the parish level, with an economic background as well, how much do you see the redundancy with the Tangi Boa Parish Economic Development Foundation and the Heidi Board? And two, how does that, one of the questions that, when I did some research that came up, is there sometimes becomes conflict when, when the agencies from outside the city, the state-level agencies, are communicating with the Heidi Board or the TEDF, that there's some confusion, or maybe sometimes, you know, things get bogged down because they really don't know who to really talk to, because we have, we pretty much have, you know, again, you know, we get into situations where we have two, two positions, we have two directors for economic development, which I think, you know, we're probably spending some close to $150 a year, just for those two salaries, for two people to do the same job. And I'm just wondering, has there been any conversation about consolidating these organizations? So we could be, you know, we've, we've just struggled with, you know, having redundancy in some positions in the city. You know, do we have that same kind of a focus, or maybe potential issue with us having two departments in the same city?
We've not run into, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
No, we have not run into that. As a matter of fact, having, having two economic development person, people in 130,000 population parish, to me, is not a bad idea, especially when you've got a city like Hammond that the growth that's happening in Hammond, and the, the planning of the growth in Hammond, it's not a bad idea to have your own economic development department, or an economic development board, that's seeking out and, and dealing with those contacts directly. I think, I think you kind of mentioned, we are on the, on the, on the beginnings of major economic development, and I think the new vision of the city and our parish is economic development with our new tower at the airport and everything that's going on. So, no, I don't, I don't think there's a redundancy of having those two boards, I think they, they, I think they actually work very well together.
Okay. Any, any questions, any other questions from the council? Any questions? Yeah, you have another comment?
Just one. We did bring a video tonight that kind of explains the tax, and if you guys want to play it, it's up to you guys.
We have nothing but time. We're paid by the, we're paid by the hours, so...
I'm sorry.
Are we paid by the hour, by the way? Are we paid by the hour? We're not? All right, no, yeah, yeah, we'll watch that.
Thank you, council.
Yes, you're welcome. Good seeing you.
You may have heard discussion around a hotel motel tax in Hammond. Here are the facts. As state budgets continue to shrink, Hammond is expected to find money for economic development on its own. More specifically, the money that funds Hammond Area Economic Industrial Development District, or Heidi. But why does Heidi need money? And what do they actually do? Hammond Area Economic Industrial Development District is a local organization that pursues economic development with a Hammond First mindset. To put it simply, the state brings economic development to the state, the parish brings economic development to the parish, Heidi brings economic development to Hammond. Or, in even less words, Heidi knows, grows, and impacts Hammond. Currently, Heidi runs on a tight budget, funded by a non-recurring revenue stream and the city budget. When it comes to attracting new businesses to Hammond, making it easy for them to locate and thrive here, and in turn, bringing new jobs and revenue along with them, these are all responsibilities that fall within Heidi's mission. So how does a hotel motel tax fit into this equation? And isn't there already a hotel motel tax? While it's true Tangi Boa has a 4% hotel motel tax in place, a majority of those funds go straight to tourism, 75% to be specific. The remaining 25% is allocated for parish economic development. None goes to Heidi. The tax up for approval is a Hammond-specific 2% hotel motel tax, and would be devoted solely to economic development through Heidi. This tax will only apply to a stay in a hotel room, motel room, or campground within Hammond city limits. That means that it would rarely be paid by local residents, but instead, by those who stay in the hotel, motel, or campground. On an average hotel stay of $79, the tax will add just $1.58. The tax is expected to produce a revenue of approximately $350,000 for Heidi. That steady income would be put to use by Heidi for economic development in Hammond and economic development alone. That includes activities like attracting new businesses and encouraging job growth in Hammond, and more broadly. It would help Heidi ensure Hammond takes a more proactive role in economic development for our community. Here's a quick recap. Hammond has to find money for economic development on its own. Heidi is dedicated to economic development in Hammond. The 2% Hammond Hotel Motel Tax would help Heidi bring new businesses and jobs to Hammond. Election Day is November 18th. Early voting begins November 3rd and ends November 11th, from 8:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Hopefully, this has been helpful in making the Hammond Hotel Motel Tax proposal more clear. If you want to learn more, you can visit hammondfirst.com.
Does y'all have one more question for you? Is Joe still here? So, this was a question just from that video, that I'm just concerned about. So, just long, just thinking long-term and visionary, long-term, you know, in most cities, you know, as we grow, and, you know, there are needs for other, you know, things that kind of complement and support the tourism industry within our city. How does that, is that, to me, it looks like it just saddles the tourism or the hotel and tourism components of our city to be maybe limited in what they can do, because we're going to take these funds from, or maybe they're going to be responsible for collecting funds to support things that are, that may not necessarily be tied to their direct growth. I could be wrong, but I'm just thinking, you know, just thinking aloud, is that, do you see that as, as being problematic that we, because this is, this tax is for forever, right? It doesn't end like with any particular period.
That's right.
So, does that tie us down, you know, from a city? Because I'm concerned about the city and how we grow in other areas. We may not be doing that now, but in the future, if we want to do that, now let's say we want to do another entity, another function, something that can help the hotel business grow, and we want to put another tax out, now we're, now we're taxing again and adding another 2% tax on, which further puts us out, because we'll never be able to say, because this Heidi tax, this, this economic tax, we're going to increase that forever. So, have we ever thought about just creating an economic development tax? Have y'all looked at that as a possibility, that wouldn't necessarily interfere with the tax from the hotel industry?
Well, on your first part of your question, I have no idea what's going to happen in the future. future. But on the second...
We've been thinking about some things.
Well, I mean, nobody, nobody knows what's gonna happen in the future. If we knew that, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be sitting here, right? We'd get lottery numbers, right? But on forecasting what can happen, I know right now, when you look around at what's happening in our city, between tourism, construction, and businesses that are staying in our hotels, you know, it's not just tourism that's taking up our hotel rooms. We have not looked at an economic development tax because...
Is that something you would do? Something you think you should consider?
I don't think we can put a property tax business, you know, I don't think we can put another property tax on our entire, on our entire thing. But we did look at multiple ways, trying to determine an area to look at gaining economic development funds and looked at other areas that are doing this, and this was one of the areas that we found.
And that was the last question I have. Do you have any examples of any other cities that are doing this, which your...
I don't have the right with me, no.
So, when y'all did the research, there are no other cities that are actually doing having a tax to the hotels?
Oh, yeah, there's, oh, yeah, there's a number of cities across the nation that do hotel motel for economic development. Oh, yeah, absolutely, for economic development.
Okay.
I have some more questions. According to this, you said that the parish collects, so they're collecting already from the hotel motel?
For tourism. It goes directly to tangible parish tourism.
And, but you said that the Economic Development Board of the parish, so that means that they're collecting from each municipality in, oh, just Hammond?
No, ma'am. Well, let me let you finish your question. You're talking about the hotels, parish-wise?
Well, your little illustration there says that they collect this money and none of it goes to the city of Hammond.
That's correct.
But they're collecting it for the parish, and we're part of the parish, that don't make a lot of sense to me.
But none of the money comes back to Hammond Economic Development.
Could I make an correction? Because that's not actually accurate.
Sure.
The 4% occupancy tax that the hotels collect, none of that goes to Tangipahoe Parish Economic Development. That all goes directly to tourism. That's tourism dollars that we earn, and it goes directly back into generating more tourism.
The video said 25%.
That, yeah, that's not correct.
Is that correct, Joe?
That is.
Go ahead.
Actually, it's correct. If you look at the dispersments of the funds, 25% of those funds goes back to, about $175,000 goes back to tangible economic development.
The funds from Tangipahoe Parish, the funds that go to T E D F come from a Visitor's Enterprise Fund from the state of Louisiana. So our 4% tax is paid directly back to tourism, to Tangi Tourism.
So, Paul goes into tourism.
Yes. The 4% occupancy tax goes directly into tourism.
Could you get a, I mean, I guess there's a difference between those two, so maybe subsequent meeting, if you would love to come back and clarify that or confirm that, you know, we would love to, you know, the council would like to know that. If that's, if you want to do that, it's up to you. I mean, you don't have to, but if you want to clarify that point, you know, that, so what Amy is saying is that the whole entire 4% goes to tourism, none of it goes to economic development. So this would be a process that we'd be setting to move money from tourism into economic development.
Correct.
Okay.
You have a question?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, we have a question.
Louise Bostick, 112 Elm Drive in Hammond. This is the first time I've seen this chairperson of Heidi, or even been in the meeting where he was present. But I just want to say one thing, it's gonna be very difficult to vote for a tax that is going to supplement that connection from Pride Drive down University. That we've had surveys that are made showing the excessive traffic from Cherry Street to Morrison, showing the numbers of accidents, probably the highest accident rate, including the intersection of Thomas and Morrison, is University and Morrison. I live there, and there's, it seems at least one a week. It's a terribly dangerous thoroughfare, five lanes, and we have 14,000 students that traverse that little section. It sometimes takes 10 minutes to get out of our subdivisions. It's an atrocity in traffic right now, and every time this is mentioned, it's sort of like a political suicide or a social suicide with a gun to our own heads to mention it because it's some kind of a, you know, a sacred cow, this connection to university. There is an alternate around through Natalebene, and we're told, well, there's no interstate connection there. But there are fewer residents, there's, it's a feasible route. And when it was first brought up, maybe five years ago, we tried to bring that up and it was just dismissed. But let me tell you, there is a lot of feeling from those subdivisions in that area, and somebody needs to listen to us. It's, they're already bringing big 18-wheelers down our road, not very many, maybe half a dozen a day. But once that bypass is there, that's gonna be part of the mix, and it's scary. And I don't know what's gonna happen. Those of us who've lived there 30 years may have to find another place to live, or else get a little convenience store on our side of university so we have food and supplies. But anyway, just wanted to make that comment. It's a rare opportunity that I'm in the presence of anyone who is on that board, or I hope you have an interest in that section from range, from Cherry Street to Morrison along University. Thank you.
Mr. Louise, this for the record, I only have one more year left in the council, but I would not support that thoroughfare, and for the reasons you're saying, the traffic in...
Because you live around there.
Yeah, there's got to be a better alternative than that. So I think that is way, way in the future. I don't, you know...
Well, I'm almost 80. If it's more than 20 years in the future, maybe.
Well, you know, we're gonna wrap this up. Any other questions? Just want to thank, yeah.
You have your mind.
You have to. Just make sure you state your name.
And address.
And address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is David Foshee. My address is 2 Longleaf Drive, Hammond, Louisiana, 70401. A little bit about me, I retired from AT&amp;T after 24 years to teach us all these, bottom line, I left my company to teach us Southeastern. Took a 60% pay cut because I wanted to be there for our children and for our students. Bottom line.
How much was that in real dollars?
No, it's not much.
Thank you.
But here's a point I want to make to you. I came to Southeastern to make a difference for our students, for our children, for our children. That's why I came here. It wasn't for the money. It was for anything else. I'm 57 years old. All right? I've done that. I've been there. I'm here for our kids. And so when we talk about a 2% sales tax, a 2% hotel motel lobby tax, hotel motel tax, what we're talking about is this, just giving us the opportunity to find jobs for our children. I see it every single year of graduation. You know what I see? Students spend four, five, or six years in college, getting a degree, and walking on that stage, being happy, being excited. I got my diploma. Awesome day, exciting day. Spend time with the family and friends, accomplish something, I may be the first one in my family. And then the very next day on Sunday morning, you wake up, you look, you look to the ceiling and you say, what now? What now? Got no jobs? Got nowhere to go? Let me say, give my graduate degree, go to St. School, give them MBA. Some do. So they stay in school another two years, thinking that it might get better. The bottom line is this tax is strictly created to help us bring business to the city of Hammond, not to the parish, to the city of Hammond, to help our kids find jobs, especially those students who don't want to leave Southeastern Louisiana University, where they want to stay here in Hammond. I came to Southeastern, 78, 1978. I stayed until '84 when I got my master's degree. I'm from North Shore and Gramercy, and guess what? I never left Hammond. My grandparents have strawberry fuses in Hammond. The bottom line is I stayed here because I love the community. And so strictly, this hotel motel tax is strictly designed to help us find economic development, to bring jobs to our city, not to the parish, to our city, and to provide a future for our kids and for our children who's graduating from the university. And for that matter, also North Shore Technical School, or any other school that we have in the parish. And for high school kids and colleges, it may not be a future for them, they need some way to provide revenue for their kids and for their family, because they may not have a means to go to Baton Rouge or New Orleans. So that's what we do at Heidi. Bring economic development, to bring jobs, and that's with the hotel motel tax. That's the only reason why we need this tax, is to fund our board so that we can put people on the street, knock on doors, and make things happen.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Lamar. Yes, ma'am.
Sure. Question from the council? That's what happens when you come up, then you give a question.
Well, that's fine, that's fine.
So my question is, how much have you brought here so far?
Well, I've only been on the board a year and a half, and so I have to refer that to Joe.
Why don't you come over and maybe answer the question, if you'd like, to Joe for Councilman Beard?
And by the way...
What has been the performance of the...
And by the way, the members of the board, we all volunteers. I volunteer because they help the city out, to give back. I'm not a paid, you know, I get paid for doing that.
We appreciate you for that, because, you know, I'm a volunteer too. I do, I'm in charge of Tangipahoe Parish AARP Tax Assistance, so I do that free.
Okay.
From, I start in January and I do it to the end of April. So I appreciate you coming in. I've also taught different classes, home by education, financial fitness, so I'm a big volunteer myself.
Okay. I'm all for it, Janice.
I even pick up trash.
I'm pulling for you.
So I'm happy, and I appreciate you for that, and I would encourage everybody to pitch in and do something also. I also went to Southeastern, and I also decided I wanted to stay here. And we're also looking into bringing economic development into the city of Hammond. So I just want to make sure that if we're gonna tax, because see, right now, with us trying to redo Zemir Park and bring that pool in and bring in some tourism, I don't want to miss out on them dollars in the hotel, I don't want to miss out on them dollars in our restaurants, and I don't want to miss out on those dollars in our bars, and our shopping over at Southeastern or wherever we can get some dollars. We are all looking for some dollars. I'm not just looking to pick them to pieces when we do get them. So I'm just asking you to explain to me what it is you do, why are you doing it, why you want this money, and what, I gotta make sure that what you're doing is accomplishing what you say you're gonna accomplish, and you ain't just sucking the money out of it, okay?
All right. That's good.
All right. All right, we're gonna wrap up. Is there any other final question before we wrap up?
Just to clarify something, if that's okay.
Make sure you state your name and where you live for the record, please.
Nick Gagliano, 902 West Colorado Street, Hammond. On the sales tax, to get it clarified, there is a 4% parish lodging tax that goes to the tourist commission. There's a 5% state sales tax. It's a state sales tax called Visitor Enterprise Fund. That goes to the state. Then each year, the state decides whether to rebate it back to the parish, and that's where the economic development, the 25% comes from. So it's not guaranteed every year that the state's gonna rebate it back. So you're talking about two different things. So there is a 4% hotel lodging that goes to the parish, as Amy said, that's used for tournaments and to bring more visitors in. But what they're saying on the video, that is a state sales tax. That's the Visitor Enterprise Fund that can be rebated back, and it's not guaranteed every year that it does come back from the state.
Let me ask you a question on that. We're talking, we got, so we got the 5% that comes in, and the state decides to provide this rebate back to the economic development arms of the parish of the city. Is the Heidi Board considered in that decision as well, or does that, so which agency does the state recognize, and why, if they only give to T E D F, why are they not dividing those funds and sharing those funds? Can T E D F share those funds with the Heidi Board?
That's, I mean, that's a question I can't answer. I mean, that's state, and that's between the two.
Has that ever been a challenge that we, since the funds comes into the parish and those funds are being collected out of the Hammond Hotels, why does the Heidi Board not get access to those funds through the parish?
That I don't...
Have you all looked into that at all?
I think every agency is getting cut their funding, and they fear of future cuts. No one wants to give up any part of their...
But if it's our dollars that we generate in Hammond, and we have the economic development industry in Hammond, why would the Hammond Economic Development Team not get access to that money versus going to the parish? Do you know, Mayor?
Do best to the parish. No one wants to give up their funds.
To the parish as much.
It's like the city of Hammond is not wanting to give up inventory tax funds that we're fearing of the state effect. You're always fearing of another cut, so.
Wow.
This particular tax as well, there are two entities that I've been talking to for hotels, a boutique hotel right here in Hammond and one out by Chapapula, where these tax dollars could directly be used as tax incentive or even infrastructure like Joe was talking about. So, you know, it's not that they couldn't be used for hotels as well, creating new hotels.
And lastly, just the tax breakdown, so everybody will know, be informed, it is the entire 14% sales tax right now. 4% is the parish occupancy tax, 5% is a state sales tax, 2% goes to the school board, just like any business, 1% to the parish council, and 2% to the city of Hammond. So the city of Hammond does collect a sales tax on the hotels currently, just like any business pays for services or whatever it may be. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
All right, well, we're gonna wrap up. Thank you, guys. This has been good for us because we typically don't get a chance to get this type of feedback. Obviously, we're not voting as a council, but it does give a platform for the citizens in the city of Hammond to be more informed, so we appreciate Amy Hope and Joe Muir for coming out and addressing the council and giving our media a chance to write stories and hopefully better inform our public. So we thank you guys for that, and we're gonna go ahead and end the public hearing session and move on into our regular session for September 26, 2017. Roll call, please.
Councilman Johnny Blunt.
Here.
Councilwoman Jason Hood.
Here.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Here.
Councilwoman Mike Williams.
Here.
Okay, we're gonna do a prayer. Josh, are you gonna listen to the prayer? And we're gonna do the salute, I mean, the pledge, and Councilman Mike Williams, do this in the pledge, and we ask all veterans and active military to render the proper suit when we do the pledge.
Thank you, O Heavenly Father, once again. Those of us that have been elected to do the business of the city of Hammond have gathered together. We pray, O Heavenly Father, that we are fair, that we listen, that we try to be just, and that we try to improve the quality of life for each and every citizen here in the city of Hammond. We thank you, O Lord, and ask you to lead and guide us in all that we do, that we may do all things that are pleasing in thy sight. We pray that each of us take care of our duties and make sure that we bring businesses and make sure that we improve our quality of life each and every day. We thank you, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Glory to God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which is in its hands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay? Do we have any council reports? My computer is dead. Okay? Any council reports? Okay. The mayor, you have a report for the council?
Short options this weekend, we had a great event at Chapapula for the adults, basketball fundraiser. It was well-attended. St. Thomas helped out with some service hours, as well as the track team for Southeastern. Well-attended, and it was a really good time for those folks at that event.
I heard you coached the team.
I did.
Did you guys win?
No, we didn't.
Oh, okay.
We lost by two.
Shucks. Well, good try. Get it next time. Okay. Good. Anything else? All right. Recognition of new businesses? Are there any new businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized? You know, we give this opportunity, this time for you guys to do that. Any new businesses in the audience that want to be recognized? Okay, if not, we're gonna accept an approval of the... Okay, if not, we're going to accept an approval of the minutes for September twelfth, two thousand seventeen. Roll call, please.
Councilman Mike Williams. Councilman Jason Hood. Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Here.
Councilman Johnny Blunt. Councilman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay. Resolutions. Old business, none, new business? Resolution number one, please.
Number one, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at five zero eight East Robinson Street. Ninety percent damage located in Council District One. The owner is Anish Charles, care of Eric Charles, nine one three Martin Luther King Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one. Bobby Mitchell.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is Mr. Eric Charles. I spoke with him concerning...
Would you let Mr. Charles state his name and his address for the record, please? If he's going to speak.
Eric Charles, five two five five Dickens Drive, Baton Rouge, Louisiana, seven oh eight one two.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
For five oh eight East Robinson Street, ninety percent damage. Building Department recommends demolition of a site. I did speak with Mr. Eric Charles. He is willing to do his personal demolition himself. We are recommending demolition with the option to demolish in forty-five days.
Okay, so how does that compare to the normal process where you hadn't... If he wasn't here, you would just recommend demolition immediately, or at your discretion?
The normal timeframe is thirty days. By state requirement, you have thirty days to do an appeal. And the process of our normal procedure for bidding and moving forward.
So you're asking for forty-five days for a self-demolition?
Which is an additional fifteen days from the thirty days.
I have one thing.
Sure, go ahead.
It's two properties on that road up for demolition? Okay. Well, what I'm getting at is, I would like more than forty-five days. I would like to get, because what happened is, my grandfather died. My grandfather owned all these properties. And when he died, we were in the process of getting the legal paper straight. We haven't got to that point yet. The other thing is, I was affected by the flood in Baton Rouge. So pretty much all my money is going into my house, and I'm not in my house yet. So what I'm asking is, maybe three months, so I can get everything lined up?
Have you guys talked about it? This is the first time you've talked?
I guess what I'm concerned about, I did speak with him, and in all due respect, I certainly want him to concentrate on the priority, which is his primary residence, in order to be in a livable situation. What I do not want is for both residents to extend past that sixty days. What I would like to do is do a forty-five with the building department monitoring the progress of demolition. And if the forty-five days time period, if there is some progress, we can in-house extend it, an additional timeframe of forty-five additional days.
So are you going to start the demolition now, but you want ninety days to complete it?
Yeah, I have to at this point.
So what you're saying then, Bobby, is that you'll be monitoring, and if you're seeing the progress, then you want to have the option to extend it for forty-five more days?
Correct.
Okay.
Make that motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard.
Aye.
Councilman Jason Hood. Councilman Mike Williams. Councilman Johnny Blunt. Councilman Lamar Marshall. Motion approved.
Okay. Good luck to you. Hope to get back in your home, too.
Number two, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at five zero nine Wilbur Dangerfield. Ninety-seven percent damage located in Council District One. The owner is Jolene Tillis, three three zero two McKinney Street, Houston, Texas, seven seven zero zero three. Bobby Mitchell.
Five oh nine Wilbur Dangerfield, ninety-seven percent damage. It was totally burned. We recommend demolition. I did speak with the owner. They are wanting to do a demolition as well, self-demolition, to alleviate some overhead and cost. I would like to give them forty-five days to do so.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? What's the pleasure to council?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard. Councilman Jason Hood. Councilman Mike Williams. Councilman Johnny Blunt. Councilman Lamar Marshall. Motion approved. Number three, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at five one zero East Robinson. Ninety-one percent damage located in Council District One. The owner is Anish Charles, care of Eric Charles, nine one three Martin Luther King Avenue, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one.
This is the second property, Bobby?
This is the second property.
So we're going to do the same ninety days, forty-five, your control, I mean, your pleasure to extend forty-five?
So we recommend demolition.
For forty-five.
Forty-five days with the option to extend.
Pleasure to council?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Jason Hood. Councilman Mike Williams. Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard. Councilman Johnny Blunt. Councilman Lamar Marshall. Motion approved. Number four, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at twelve oh one Apple Street. Ninety-eight percent damage located in Council District One. The owner is Ernest and Mary J. Evans, five one nine Hoover Street, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one.
Spoke with these owners. They are favorable, wanting to do their own demolition as well. We're recommending demolition with a forty-five day... I apologize. This is twelve oh one Apple.
Yes.
Ninety-eight percent, recommended demolition.
Self-demolition? Are you going to be doing the demolition?
Thirty days.
Thirty days? Okay.
I was jumping to number five.
That's fine. You know the future.
I'm anxious.
Okay. Pleasure to council?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard. Councilman Jason Hood. Councilman Mike Williams. Councilman Johnny Blunt. Councilman Lamar Marshall. Motion approved. Number five, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at one zero zero six South Magnolia Street. Ninety-eight percent damage located in Council District Three. The owner is Emile and Gloria B. Conley, care of Donna Conley, senior, eleven oh three West Coleman, West Coleman, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero three.
Ten oh six South Magnolia, ninety-eight percent damage. Recommended demolition with option to do it in forty-five days by the owner.
Pleasure to council?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard. Councilman Jason Hood. Councilman Mike Williams. Councilman Johnny Blunt. Councilman Lamar Marshall. Motion approved. Number six, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at seven one zero Blackburn Road. Eighty-eight percent damage located in Council District Four. The owner is Gerald J. Meyer, junior, Anita M. Meyer, seven one zero Blackburn Road, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero one.
Council District Four, seven ten Blackburn, eighty-eight percent damage. I spoke with the owner as well. They're in favor of doing demolition. We recommend demolition at forty-five days. Keep in mind that at the end of the forty-five days, we will proceed with our bids and normal demolition process.
All right. Pleasure to council?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard. Councilman Jason Hood. Councilman Mike Williams. Councilman Johnny Blunt. Councilman Lamar Marshall. Motion approved. Number seven, a resolution authorizing the demolition of a property located at two one zero three Dennis Drive. Seventy-three percent damage located in Council District Four. The owner is Barbara C. Peterson, three six two four East Encinas Avenue, Gilbert, Arizona, eight five two three four, Encinas, Gilbert Avenue. I mean, Gilbert, Arizona.
Bobby, we never would go there anyway.
Right. Twenty-one oh three Dennis Drive. The photograph is only a picture of the front. It'll be somewhat deceiving. That house is burned. The rear and the west side of the home is completely deteriorated by fire. I recommend demolition for twenty-one oh three Dennis Drive.
Pleasure to council?
Motion.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard. Councilman Jason Hood. Councilman Mike Williams. Councilman Johnny Blunt. Councilman Lamar Marshall. Motion approved.
And may I present our previous demolition list of February the fourteenth of this year. Hundred percent completion. Nine structures, all been demolished, six by the city.
You've never done this before.
I have. You've been an absentee.
Oh. You're actually showing us that you guys actually, because you actually did it, huh? Wow.
I have a question, Bobby. The property is corner of Church and General Persian. I know the sign on it. Where are we at on that property?
Church and General Persian, that would be...
Very small house.
That'd be East Church and, well, West Church, South General Persian.
Nope. North General Persian.
West, I'm sorry. Northwest part of town. I do not have anything on it. I noticed that that was an existing historic district directly across from... Is that the one directly across from the park?
No.
Past my house, and you're going toward General Persian. You get to General Persian, you look across the street. Old White House.
Where the big oak tree is, with the lock is undeveloped.
We can look at it and get back with you.
I'll have to do inspection on it. I don't have it on the current list we have. We have a concurrent list, which is generating each month, and there are probably additional ten on there as we speak.
I know the sign up already, it says the structure's unsafe.
Probably just cite it for attention, for vacancy.
And it may not be at that level for demolition.
Right, right, right. We do that for...
There for a couple, three or four years, that just is still unsafe, but still structurally able to...
Structurally sound, right. We do it for prevention of loitering, particularly if it's not secure from entry.
Looking for us to be on my...
Sure will.
Thanks.
I'm still waiting for that one on the corner of Natchez and Live Oak.
That's on our next group. We're hoping to do a next presentation for the month of January of two thousand and eighteen.
All right. Well, good. So you're still going to do Council Blunt's district? Councilman Blunt's district primarily, or you're going to focus on...
Actually, we don't discriminate. We target destructions as they deteriorate.
What I'm talking about is my district.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right. Okay. Next resolution, please.
Number eight, a resolution to approve change order number one final on Phoenix Square Pedestrian Bridge Repair Project number four two zero one one seven one eight, for an increase of six hundred and seventy dollars. Jay Pittman.
Good evening. What I have before you all tonight is change order number one, and the final change order, adjusting final quantities for the Phoenix Square Pedestrian Bridge Project. The overall increase was six hundred and seventy dollars for a total contract of thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars. This was for the repair of the Phoenix Square Bridge and associated drainage.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Pleasure to council? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard. Councilman Jason Hood. Councilman Mike Williams. Councilman Johnny Blunt. Councilman Lamar Marshall. Motion approved. Number nine, a resolution to approve the final acceptance of Phoenix Square Pedestrian Bridge Repair Project four two zero one one seven one eight. Jay Pittman.
I have a notice of acceptance by the owner. The contractor has successfully completed the project, and we have inspected it with no punchless items. We'd recommend acceptance.
Pleasure to council? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard. Councilman Jason Hood. Councilman Mike Williams. Councilman Johnny Blunt. Councilman Lamar Marshall. Motion approved. Number ten, a resolution to ratify an award bid received on September fifteenth, two thousand and seventeen, for Bulkhead Improvements Physical Year two thousand and sixteen. Project number four two zero one one six zero nine, to the low bidder, Chambers Construction Company, Inc., in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ten cents. NRCS, ninety percent, city of Hammond, ten percent match. Jay Pittman.
You should have a bid summary hyperlinked. It totals all the bidders for the Bulkhead Improvements FY two thousand and sixteen project. We had thirteen total bidders for the project. You also have a tabulation of the bid, showing all the contractors' prices as well. We recommend ratifying award for the base bid and the additive alternate for Bulkhead Improvements FY two thousand and sixteen. The base bid consists of the South Hazel Street Bulkhead between Second Avenue and Third Avenue. The additive alternate was some bank stabilization near the northwest buttment of the CM Fagan Box Colberts. Both these projects were within bid, and keep in mind, this is an NRCS grant project. The city of Hammond is responsible for ten percent match, with NRCS funding ninety percent of the construction cost. So we recommend award to Chambers Construction LLC for the base bid, and additive alternate in the amount of seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ten cents.
Any questions from the council? From the public? Pleasure to council?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter Beard. Councilman Jason Hood. Councilman Mike Williams. Councilman Lamar Marshall. Councilman Johnny Blunt. Motion approved.
Thank you all.
Number eleven, a resolution authorizing the city of Hammond, state of Louisiana, to proceed with the issuance of its not-to-exceed fifteen million dollar revenue bonds. Mr. Jim Ryan?
Thank you, Jim Ryan, Government Consultants.
Give me your address, please.
One seven zero zero one Shady Arbor Lane, Baton Rouge, Louisiana. Thank you, Mayor, member of the council.
Jim, we had a conversation in my office, and I think you know some of my concerns. My question to you is, generally with the state, when you bond out, you get the projects in place, you get the funding in place. Say to our director of finance is really concerned about how much we want to bond out safely for our general fund, be able to operate and continue to capitalize on projects. And her number is seven million dollars. How does that play in to what you're trying to do here? And explain that a little bit to us, because...
Mayor, yeah, the number is not up to me at all. It's up to you. I'm not suggesting or lobbying that you borrow one million, fifteen million, or anything. It's a matter of if you all decide how much you want to borrow, we'll be glad to walk that process for you.
So the fifteen million analogy that's been used somewhat was basically, it's like a credit line, and you're going out not to exceed fifteen million. So no fees or nothing like that from your company is dealt with until you actually go back to the bonding commission for the actual bonds themselves?
Two good questions, and I'll try to make sense of them. The not-to-exceed amount, and the not-to-exceed duration or term, and the not-to-exceed interest rate are simply parameters. And as long as you live within those parameters, if you want to borrow one million, or one point seven, or two, or whatever, you're within that box. If for some reason you wanted fifteen million and twenty cents, you would have to start basically a three- or four-month paper pushing process over again, just like the interest rate. You know, the not-to-exceed six percent, anybody reading that would look staggering and high, because the truth is, as good a credit as you all are, because the great administration of the council, and the administration, and Lacy, I know, y'all are very strong credit, the real interest rate that you're paying over the life of those bonds would probably be around three and a half percent. But you all know what a yield curve is. So if you borrow a ten-year mortgage, right now, that might be at four percent. But if you went on a thirty-year mortgage, that's probably at five point seven five. And they call that the yield curve. And bonds are the same. So when we sell bonds, we might sell a hundred thousand dollars to the Chairman Marshall, and he may only want that for one year, because he may want just to park that money for one year. Well, Chairman Marshall's only going to make probably less than one percent on that money for one year. Ms. Beard may want to invest for her grandchildren's college education in twenty years,[1756.93] Ms. Beard may want to invest for her grandchildren's college education in twenty years, so she may buy a twenty-year maturity of that bond. Well, Ms. Beard's going to earn probably three percent on her bonds. To make it even more complicated, Mr. Hood, who we all know is just throwing money away, has too much taxes to pay. So he comes to us and says, I want to buy the thirty-year bond. So we say it's five percent. He says, yeah, but I need it to yield seven percent, Jim, or I need it to yield six percent for taxes so I can deduct it off. And that bond is, say, a ten thousand dollar bond. So you are selling him a ten thousand dollar bond, he's giving you ten thousand dollars. The stated rate is, let's say, five percent, but he wants it to be six. So Mr. Hood says, I'll tell you what, instead of giving you ten thousand dollars, I'll give you eleven thousand dollars for the bond. Okay? So the yield on that bond is now higher than the face rate. So the, all of those parameters, the length, the yield, the term, the dollar amount are all just parameters. And to answer your second question, as you and I and as Lacey and I have discussed and as you and Councilman Hood met, you won't owe anybody anything until, as far as fees go, until two things happen. Number one, the State Bond Commission approves the fees and more importantly, number two, until all of us interested parties sit down and meet and go over what the fees would be and say, you in agreement with this? Are you comfortable with this? Do you like this? And again, and this is a great question, Mayor, because I want to point this out. When we go to the Bond Commission, we will put not-to-exceed parameter fees in the Bond Commission. We will ask for permission to get a surety bond, insurance, to do a private placement or an underwriting. We will put all those fees in there. We do not ever anticipate using all of that money. You know, we'll put twenty thousand dollars in there for a rating report that we think will cost us fifteen thousand dollars. For example, on your two thousand fourteen sales tax revenue refunding bonds, the fees that were approved by the Bond Commission, you actually paid thirty-seven thousand dollars less than what the Bond Commission said you could pay if you needed to. So no fees would be obligated or paid to anybody, anything, any time until those two things happen. Number one, the Bond Commission has to approve them. And number two, Chairman of the Council, Mayor, anybody else, any other interested party, sit down and say, what's this person making? What's that person making? What's this person making? What's this person making? As Lacey and you know, as a municipal advisor and as your municipal advisor, I have a fiduciary responsibility to you, the council, under the Securities and Exchange Commission. I'm licensed, I had to pass an exam and get licensed to do that. One of those fiduciary responsibilities that I have to you is to give you my professional opinion on the fairness of fees. And I always tell, like I told the Mayor, Lacey, the real question is, so I'm giving you advice on my fee too. Well, who's looking at my fee? And I always tell my clients, the best thing you can do is call the Bond Commission where I used to work. I worked there for five years. I was the local governmental debt officer, which meant I reviewed every local governmental bond issue in the state that was done. And it was my job to compare fees. What happens is you turn your application in and they take three other transactions of similar structure, and Lacey and I talked about this a long time one day, so negotiated versus negotiated, not negotiated versus competitive or different structures. I'm not going to compare a revenue bond, you know, or an ad valorem bond like we did at Chapapila or a sewer revenue bond like we're doing for the sewer district. Those two bonds aren't comparable. It's two totally different credits. But they'll pick three other bond issues of similar structure and size, line them out line by line. I used to have to do this and compare the fees. If there's more than a ten percent variance, this is what happens. I'd pick up the phone and I'd call Lacey, who let's say Lacey was your municipal advisor, and I'd say, Lacey, I looked at this deal, this deal, this deal and this deal, and your fee is ten percent higher than the average of those three. So you want to cut your fee or do you want to get the Mayor or the Chairman of the Council to meet you at the Bond Commission during the Bond Commission meeting and you can explain why your fee is ten percent higher for the City of Hammond than everyone else? And ninety percent of the time, Lacey would say, I don't want to do that. I'll cut my fee to whatever the other three were paid. So, but those are great questions.
So we're going before the Bond Commission now before we actually have the projects in place? The benefit?
Scut, scut, scut. Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, because I think we kind of, I wanted to kind of know before we started the dialogue, what, and I think that Councilman Hood, this is a agenda item for him, I, I'd like for us to have, explain to the council why we're even having this discussion. You know, if you want to maybe review what we're talking about and then, and then I think I'd love to hear more about, because I, I want to make sure that the public knows why we're actually talking about the funds before we.
Only history I can shed on that, Chairman Marshall, is Mr. Hood and Lacey and the Mayor and I and the CFO met in the Mayor's office two or three months ago, I think, to discuss the possibility of borrowing some money.
Okay.
For capital projects in the city.
Okay. Right. That's what I was trying to get to because I think we want to know why we're doing this, okay?
Yeah. And that's pretty much the history that I have on it.
That's it.
Yes, sir. That's it.
So, so we're, so we're, just to recap, we're, we're looking at anticipated capital projects. And, and I think the question that I had was, I just want a layman terms answer, you know, just, just.
I tried very hard to do that, Mr. Chairman, and forgive me if I don't.
Yeah, just, just, just real quick. So, so if we, if we, so basically to summarize from my understanding is that we're saying this is an opportunity for us to, to put ourselves in a position to, to be able to, to borrow, to bond funds to do capital projects. And, and at this point, there is no cost associated with our decision tonight at all, zero cost. Because all we're doing is just moving a resolution forward from what I understand just, just, just for the process, just to get the process started. And that, does that commit us to your organization? Does it still give us the option to, to go with a, a, an organization that would be more competitive if that, if that was the case? Are we, are we committing to your organization tonight as well or are we just committing to the process?
Mr. President, can I answer that, please?
Sure, yeah, sure.
Because I think that puts Mr. Ryan in a peculiar position.
No, I'm, I think it's, there's two answers, but go ahead, Chairman, Mr. Councilman.
If y'all, if y'all recall, we did pass a resolution where we did hire Government Consultancy to be our, to be our financial advisor.
I remember that.
Late last year. So they would assist us with this, this prob.
And this is your, this is.
Process. This is our, this is our representative.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I think I might explain. When we were here last time, my partner, Nandi Thompson, was here, who I believe you know.
Okay, okay. So that's the decision, that's what you're saying. So we actually hired your organization to do this, what we're doing right now?
Yes, sir. And, and I want to ask one more question.
Sure, go ahead.
To, to, and bring this up. So with that being said, like Mr. Ryan has said, and I've told the council numerous times and the Mayor, we pay nothing unless there are some, there was actually some progress made in the bond issuance.
Absolutely. I've worked on bond issues for ten years.
One thing I wanted to touch on a while ago is when you talked about fees, because there's been a lot made about the fees. I've, I've heard talk about fees, fees, fees. Can you tell me, in the eleven years that I've sat on the council and that we've done some numerous bond issuances, refinances, renewals, whatever you want to call it, have we ever been charged less than the maximum amount allowed by law?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So what Mr. Ryan's company does will negotiate what we haven't been getting negotiated because.
And who would, who would be doing that negotiation?
If I, if, if I could interrupt.
Yes, sir.
So, and I think, Lacey, you can verify what I'm going to say. So even in two thousand fourteen, when you did the sales tax refunding bonds, the Dodd-Frank Act really was not in effect yet. And so you didn't see probably, probably in about ten percent of municipalities in the country at that point in time, still did not use municipal advisors. They simply would go out and hire a bond attorney and the bond attorney would kind of do everything.
With no negotiation for, for, for fees?
You, you could. There's actually one local government that I know of in all of Louisiana that I used to represent, St. Tammany Parish. We used to be their standing municipal advisor. And about a year ago, year and a half ago, they said, you know what, we're going to RFP everything all the time. And they're the only local government that I know that does that. The state does it. It's very uncommon for local governments to do it. In fact, like I said, St. Tammany is the only one that I know that does that. Most of the time, you just go out and hire your financing team. And in the past, it's been driven by your bond attorney and because that's, that's how it was set up and that's, but like I said, even up until about four years ago, you probably still had about ten percent of cities that didn't have a municipal advisor. But now it's become almost an impossibility and no one wants to take the risk. There's a fantastic bond lawyer, Ms. Carmen Laverne with Butler Snow, which is a huge, huge governmental practice law firm with nations, with all offices all over the world, literally. And I think she would attest the fact that they don't like being anywhere near a bond issue or a client without a municipal advisor because of the implementation of the Dodd-Frank Act. So the, the, you know, getting to your answer to your question, Chairman, in the past, there really was not, almost a regulatory mandate that you have someone negotiating those fees for you and doing that job. There was the opportunity to, if you wanted to, you could certainly find a municipal advisor, but it wasn't nearly as heavily regulated as it became about two years ago. So, and it, it, it spelled out clearly at that point in time, there is one person that has fiduciary responsibility to you. It's not my dear friend, the bond lawyer, it's not your underwriter, it's not your trustee, it's not any of those people. It's the municipal advisor. And subsequently to that, the GFOA came out with their best practices, I'm saying GFOA, I didn't know the wrong person, the GFOA came out with their best practices standards that's, and I think they say they, after that, after that, those laws were into effect, that they strongly recommend you hire a municipal advisor. So it was, I, I don't want to characterize it that nobody was watching the ship. I just don't think that, as back ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, people didn't.
So there was never really no negotiation even happening, is what you're saying?
It, it, it just wasn't the way things were done. And I, and I'm not saying, I'm, I'm trying very hard to say that I don't think the city did anything.
We're not trying.
Yeah.
We're not asking you to say that either, so.
Jim, some of this too, I know that we talked, was the difference in fees between the competitive sale versus the negotiated sale and that the trend in how that had been looked at has changed over time too.
Exactly.
And that, and that creates a huge difference in amount of fees.
That's exactly right. And it, Lacey makes a great point. So, and I'll try to talk in layman's terms and throw something at me if I don't, Mr. Chairman. Historically, there have been two ways to, to get a lender to give you money. It's, it's how you, you literally sell a piece of paper, you sell a bond issue to Jason, Jason gives me ten million dollars. It's competitive bid, which sounds wonderful, open process, and there's negotiated bid. As Lacey said, ten, fifteen years ago, when you looked at the, the spread between what Jason gave me for the piece of paper and then Jason almost immediately, always immediately turns around and sells it to the Mayor, that's, he's just a middleman. It's, that's what they do. The spread was always better, that spread between what he gave me and what he sold it to the Mayor for, that's how he makes his commission. The spread was always, always better for a competitive sale. So much so that many states like Louisiana had laws that set on new money, general obligation bonds, you had to do competitive bid. But as Lacey indicated, about ten years ago, that started to change. And one of my former partners at the time was Speaker of the House, a man named Jimmy Tucker, used to be a partner of our firm. He later, he left the firm and ran for House of Representatives and became Speaker of the House in Louisiana. They changed that law when he was Speaker because the trends started to change and negotiated started to come, become a much better way. And the, the point that Lacey's making is that in a negotiated transaction, I actually sat down and showed Lacey a negotiated transaction you all had done and a competitive bid transaction that you all had done earlier. If you looked at the fees on those two transactions, there's a stunning difference. I mean, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars difference. And the difference is this, many of those fees are hidden, two of your biggest fees are hidden in a competitive sale. And it's like, you go down and you say, I want to make a home loan. And they say, well, there's no closing costs. And you say to yourself, well, so there's no title attorney, there's no appraisal, there's no termite inspector, there's no recordation fees, how you doing this? Well, those people are getting paid and you know how they're getting paid, they're building it into the rate. And that's exactly what happens in a competitive sale. You, you go to the underwriter, you go to Mr. Hood, the underwriter, and you say, you know what, you want bond insurance? Buy it. You want a rating? Buy it. Whatever your fees are, doesn't matter, we just want to know what the interest rate is. On a negotiated sale, all of those things are disclosed to you and negotiated. The, the, there's two or three fees that are non-negotiable, that's the insurance premium and the rating. The rest of them, that's where I sit down with the Mayor and, you know, again, I'll say, I want him to check my fee with the Bond Commissioner and then my job is to give him advice and you all advice on those other fees and say, is this a good deal? Are you getting a good market transaction here?
To answer the President's question, you are, we're not going to compare your fees to anyone else, you are our agent. Is that correct?
If you decide to do an RFP, then yeah, absolutely, you would, you would do that. Right now, we are the municipal advisor to the city. Which reminds me, if you asked a question earlier and I wanted to answer, it's totally nothing to do with this, you asked about the possibility of doing a different kind of tax for economic development in the city. The City of Bogalooce is one of our clients and they have a citywide tax, sales tax dedicated to economic development.
Why did you say that when those guys were here?
I, I've just remembered it, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Well, good, okay. All right, okay. All right, well.
Can I jump back to one thing?
Sure.
So you asked me, or maybe the Mayor asked me, what is the benefit of moving on this? So this is the timeline to do a bond issue and you can see it's basically about three months from start to finish. You know, the, the, the benefit is, is you push paper for three months before you're in a position to lock in an interest rate. And I talked to Lacey about a month and a half ago and told her, I wasn't calling to bug her, I was calling about fifteen people that day because they all got bond issues in the works and it was the same conversation. Rates have moved up by about two-thirds of one percent in the last year. On ten million dollars, that's sixty-six thousand dollars a year more in interest in the first year declining thereafter. If rates continue to move up, which everyone kind of thinks they will slowly but surely, they, you, you lose money. You wind up paying money in interest as opposed to putting money in the ground. But it's totally your decision. Again, I'm not, it would be highly unethical for me to push you all to borrow X amount or spend it on one project or anything like that. That's totally y'all's decision. This process simply caps what you can do as far as a dollar amount and an interest rate at a time. It leaves the projects open. If you want to move in six months, you move in six months. But even in six months, you'll have the paperwork out of the way and you'll be able to go lock in a rate.
Let me just ask this one question. Hey, Jim, we, we talked early and I just want to be sure. In the process, the council will adopt the final ordinance. Will that set out the exact param, within the parameters, it'll set out the exact dollar amount?
Yes.
So that, that dollar amount could be seven million, eight million, ten million, so long as it's within fifteen million.
Yes.
Within the interest rate and within the term.
That's correct. And Ms. Laverne is the bond attorney that drafted the resolution and she would be the one that drafts the ordinance and the final ordinance and a stack of bond documents.
We'll come back to the council for the final.
That's right.
Just state your, your name and first, last name and your address for the record.
I'm Carmen Laverne with Butler Snow. My address is one three one five South Columbine in Baton Rouge, seven oh eight oh eight. He's correct, we do have to come back with the final bond ordinance and that really sets out more details of the terms of the bonds. You can do that two ways. I mean, your bond ordinance can again be a parameter sale bond ordinance. All of these things are done really to save time and to give you maximum options for flexibility. You can come back with your bond ordinance after you price the bonds and then you have all of your exact terms. You'll have the precise power amount, you'll have your payments, all of that will be laid out in the bond ordinance. So really how you choose to do that is a function of timing and, and how you instruct me to proceed.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the, from the public? Okay. Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve. Got it.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jason Hood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Councilman Hood. Appreciate it.
Final adoption, number one, final adoption of an ordinance for annexation into the Hammond City Limits, initial zoning to CN, and to place in the City Council District Number Three, requested by Monroe Manor Limited Partnership for 11.427 acres, being Lot 1A of the road Stacy Mini, partitioned located at 42250 North Oyster Drive, in accordance with survey by Andrew Fowler, recommended approval by Planning, and Planning Commission.
Pleasure to counsel.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved. Number two, final adoption of an ordinance, amend ordinance UDC number 145364, Appendix E, Historic District, Appendix A, Residential Clarification, recommended approval by Zoning Commission.
Pleasure to counsel.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Janice Carter-Beard.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jason Hood.
Aye.
Councilwoman Mike Williams.
Aye.
Councilwoman Johnny Blunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Motion approved. Introduction of an ordinance and set of public hearing. Introduction of an ordinance to amend the City of Hammond budget for fiscal year 2017, 2018, to transfer up to $500,000 from the General Fund Balance Fund 100 to City Department to implement the 2017 comprehensive classification and salary compensation study as produced by Management Advisory Group, Lacey Landry.
Two things that were delivered to you tonight, one was delivered to you much earlier over email. The one delivered to you much earlier over email is the report that you have a print copy also of, which is the entire report that we have received from the Management Advisory Group. It is the details of the salary compensation study and their recommendation for the placement of every one of the City of Hammond employees within the payment structure and grid for the city. It contains where each employee currently is and what it's proposed to go to. So that's all outlined in that report. The second thing that you have delivered to you in print form is an update of the budget. Seda wanted to make sure that you had everything in front of you in terms of what has been spent year-to-date, as we make this decision going forward about implementing the MAG salary study.
I know we're going to have a conversation, but so, I guess we just anticipated, do we anticipate that we were going to be giving an increase this year?
We knew that by ordinance, every two years, we are required by ordinance to do the salary compensation study, and we did not know how that study would turn out. So what you have in front of you is the study, it is an increase. In addition to that, what, what you did already budget was the anniversary 2 percent or 1 percent increases for the employees based on where they are on steps. That has already been budgeted. This would be in addition to that, which is why it's being introduced as a budget amendment item that would, if you introduced it, go up for public discussion. It is the, is the duty and responsibilities to bring the report to council for your consideration going forward.
So typically, I think, last time, we got this done prior to the budget.
Yes. No, sir, no.
Well, you guys have a different opinion, so...
I think it was after the budget was approved.
So it's a yes, and no, I mean, you guys are saying two different things.
Well, it wasn't approved by the council prior to the approval of the budget, because we were going...
But you had the results in prior to, in the year, before we went into the new budget year.
We had some of the results in, and if you'll remember, what we did was we gave additional sheets of papers to everybody.
Listen, my question, I'm not talking about this budget. I said in this particular MAG review, I was talking about in the past, the previous MAG review was done prior to the beginning of your budget.
It was, but we also had tweaks, we had to go back to them for different tweaks that needed to be done.
That's what I was asking, that's the question I was asking.
Absolutely.
So, so, so we're probably, for whatever reason, we're, we did the budget without